We used to play games with Chris Parker. When I was playing, it's Chris Parker. And I hit you home runs. I saw him outside, we used to play in the football. We don't do that much. But yeah, never forget, it was the first time we learned how to take a cold drink in the water. They dried out the black water. Well, Stan.
Appreciate everybody coming and helping us out again. Let's rock here. Tim and Patty have come along. Tim, well, appreciation for the kids who worked there 29 years. He was just a little boy. Patty worked for us 15 years. Let's give them a hand. Okay, I like George. May I come up if you need me? If you got something you want to say.
Good evening. Mayor, Council, Madam Administrator, I appreciate y'all letting me come tonight to speak to you tonight. I was asked by a few of the council members to be here to speak. Some weeks back, I don't get to often read the newspaper, but sometimes I do. Read a little article in the paper that may, I want to give some clarification to you as a council and the citizens of Salem. I've received a few phone calls after this article went out. And the article basically stated that I, as Dutch Smith, the sheriff of Barret County, that I wanted to take over the police department here in the city of Salem. Nothing to be further from the truth. I have a special place in my heart for the city of Salem. The best thing's ever happened to me, my wife was born and raised on Billytown Road. Best thing's ever happened to me is for my two children. My first son is right here in the city of Salem. My best friend lives in the city of Salem. So I have a special place for Salem in my heart. I support them, support y'all. And I want you to know, as the mayor and council, anybody that's in the city, that I'm not here to take over some big partnership. I'm not here to take over, I'm here to work alongside, not in front, not behind, alongside you as a council, as a city government, especially the police department. If they ever need help, we will be here to help them, any way, shape, form. I want that to be declared, y'all know that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. August the 31st, 2018. You have minutes left, please. These are 7:10, ladies. Any questions? Do you have a motion to approve? We have a second. All in favor? Special call meeting July 3rd, 2018. You'd like to call for a motion?
I make the motion to approve.
Do you have a second?
I second it also.
Everybody in favor?
Okay, we're going to begin the goal business, but first item on the agenda is the second reading of an alcohol ordinance amendment for church. We talked about this at the last couple meetings, is there any questions?
I make the motion that we approve the alcohol ordinance amendment for church.
Okay, we got a motion to approve, you have a second.
I second it.
All in favor? Okay, you want to go?
I want to know if they are in agreement.
The church?
The agreement has been, has not been signed, but is agreement being, has been processed. And reason has not been signed, they have not, they cannot apply for the alcohol. And it would be, once they apply, it will be agreement between them. That's my understanding.
Okay, any more questions?
Well, I, Ms. Nadya, I was here the night that the, that the church and the, um, the next person people were talking. And that they had said that they did, as long as this, this, this was done, that they had an agreement, so that makes it going to go.
Yeah, I thought some of them did agree. Now, hell, I think not all of them, many have meetings.
It's an honor system. Yeah, we, the church, they're coming for it.
Well, I think it's kind of a sad thing to say, when we try to separate the church and the rest of the stock of rich.
Okay, any more questions?
Okay, the second item on the goal business is the second reading.
We gotta leave that approved.
The second reading for the beginning of store security ordinance?
Did we make any, made any changes to this ordinance?
Not since it was presented, you all last month. What this does, you recall the problems we had with BP and the department, looking for those on their, where they sold those premises? This ordinance basically puts what the city requires of them in effect on all C stores in terms of security measures.
If no question, discussion, I'm going to make the motion that we pass.
I have something.
Okay.
And I was wanting to know if the chief or anybody else in the city has had an interaction with the new owners of the BP and the new owners of the Sitco? And how, how they viewed the, the new ordinance, or was it just kind of absorbed into the deal, or, you know, I don't know.
I spoke with both of the owners of BP and the Sitco, and they're aware of the requirements. They're also aware of the requirements as far as people that be serving or selling alcohol at the cash register and the required training. And both of those are ready to go forward with that training with those, those cats here.
And also the, you know.
Well, I knew, I knew that part of it. So they're on board with, with the new changes in training?
That's correct.
More questions?
If not, I'm going to make the motion, go ahead, step for the second reading.
Okay, you have a motion, you have a second. Eighty seconds, all in favor?
The next item on the goal business is the ethics board.
Okay, you have a motion.
I couldn't hear that, I'm sorry.
I, I, I take the motion that we table it until.
Okay, okay.
And it will be, it will be announced. We don't have a date set this very minute, but it will be announced.
Oh, that's fine, I got you to get your.
Okay. More questions?
I have a question. Why not open that ethics committee in a regularly scheduled meeting? That's what the opening meetings act requires.
It does not.
Special call meetings.
Special call meetings should be at any, at any time.
Yeah, hold, hold it.
They are meant to be for items that come up between meetings that cannot be, that cannot wait until the next regularly called meeting. They're not meant to be just fly-by-night meetings, we don't want most of the people out, so we'll schedule it at 2:00 in the afternoon on a Tuesday. They're supposed to be for when most of the citizens can be here, and that's the regularly called meeting.
Okay, thank you for talking. Do we have any? All right, we're going to table it too, uh, for a special call meeting. You have a motion to do that?
Come ahead, Mr..
All in place.
Okay, we're going to begin this now. I am A, who's the final fact of the lights of Salem is going to be dropped from this evening's agenda as that is already. Which we just too bold of agreement. I know that that was a large discussion last week. One thing that we are going to be to review with that, regardless of whether the mayor and council made a decision, is the insurance policies for each state or each representative.
Okay, let's, let's add number two to come up to be. You got comments?
As we discussed last week, we're here to take use of, or use the field along with the other team. As far as I go, we also have turned out, actually, an agreement that allows them to use the field. Us to, you know, as a group, do the repairs to the facility, maintain the facility, um, and so on, and hold tournaments, your games here, and stuff to our benefit, city of Salem. Along with teams and stuff, bring in more people, teams, stuff like that, and hopefully, like I said, give y'all a schedule so we can work with y'all. And city of Salem, try to coordinate bringing revenue for the city, and stuff like that.
Okay, you have to, Michelle, maybe we can talk this off.
And I talked to Marvin, and we will also supply insurance information that she's talking about. Cover our, our kids and our group as well as his group, he has insurance for his team also.
Okay. Any questions?
I have one. Um, this is for, this is, this is for the grant board.
Grant board, oh, yeah.
We were still not built to use your park, still a club for our other teams, we use it every single night.
Okay.
We, we have reached an agreement, and I trust what they want to do.
Glad y'all worked it out.
Oh, yeah. Yes, sir.
I have one thing to ask you. Um, I think it's a good thing to do, put our kids in a positive manner instead of learning tricks, learning bad things, you know, and endorsing the good things. And I believe young children starting sports is, uh, and, and, and learning codes of ethics is a great thing to support them to start. Because a lot of kids don't hate that. It's fun. It's much more important.
Do you want to? Do you want that?
Yes, sir.
I want to see him play ball and then.
As well as, like I said, it will make improvements to the field, to make it nice to where people actually want to come and, and watch him. And try to coordinate y'all having a festival or something, try to bring in a tournament, that way people can, when games are kind of the festival.
And they've got some good ideas with the concession stands, I think, I think they're going to be good in the community over there on Cleveland. I think they're going to bring a lot of kids and a lot of youth over there to do that. Especially the concession stands, I bet kids going to there, you watch baseball, so get in the fights and stuff, and worry about the cheese. I think they're going to be good, I really do.
Okay. Our Sunfire Festival is in one block and one above. You guys could.
We'll get, we'll put our heads together so we can.
Uh, anyway, y'all participate in that would be most welcome, I think, a lot of the city. We need a motion to accept the ball field agreement. I make the motion that we accept the ball field agreement.
We have a second.
Would you mind if I, as long as their insurance is appropriated by the person?
Okay, I make the motion that we mind doing that. Accept the ball field agreement as long as your insurance covers.
Take a lot.
Yeah, covers the liability that's sitting with you by accident or anything. Also, I have a.
Okay, you got a motion to second?
I'll, I'll second. I'll second.
All in favor? You got it, so.
Ms. Nadya, um, your business is cut off fee for water.
Well, he would like to change the wording from the cut-off fee to the admin fee when they run a cut-off fee. So, so before the, before the, the customers are coming in, okay, we have to do what it does when we do the cut-off fee. So leaving it at an administrative fee, it can stay.
Okay, what's different, if you're late, there's a late fee, correct?
That's the penalty, yes.
So what is the difference then, changing the word? What does that mean to me as a citizen of Salem in plain language? You're, you're going to try, if I run late, you're going to charge me a late fee, and you're going to charge me an min on top of that?
Yeah, every, the bills is due on the 15th, so anybody that doesn't pay by the 15th, there's a 10% late fee already added to it. And then, if you don't pay by the 20th, the 21st, they do the cut-off, and we have to prepare and do the cut-off of this. And there is a $50 additional, it's called cut-off or reconnect fee.
So I would have a late fee.
Uh-huh.
And I have admin fee, and I have a reconnect fee.
No, 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 we're changing the cut-off fee to an admin fee.
It's just a change in wording.
What kind of dollars are we talking?
There's no change in the fee schedule.
Yeah, there's no fee change.
But you're adding an min.
No, we're changing the wording.
Okay, so it's one fee. One fee.
Yeah, some places call it the net booking, other most, uh, units of premium processing.
Now, most of the bills that I've dealt with in my 63-plus years, there's a 15-day grace period. My mortgage is a lot more than my water bill, and they give me 15 days.
Yes, it's all you can, along with.
But you're giving me five days.
The city is, I'm not giving you anything, I mean, the city is, that's the city policy.
Well, but you're, as a representative of the city, you are giving me five days. Those, those dates, those, those times have been in effect in the city for a long time, they're not changing the dates.
Yeah, no dates are changing.
Well, all right, so you're only going to have one fee, you're just changing the name of the fee?
There's two different fees, one is the entry, or the balance, and the other is.
And that's at the 15th?
Yes. And the other is the, like, or what we call it now is the cut-off.
And that's when you, when you say cut-off, water?
Yeah, cut off the water and wants them to pay you reconnect the water. So that fee covers the cut-off and the reconnect.
So if it doesn't get cut off and they do beat the, the guy that's supposed to be going out and cut off, if they beat that person in and pay it, are they still going to be charged your, that you changed the name to an admin?
Well, we are going to move to where it is more substantially correct, that admin fee will go on, say, at noon night, that night. What we're going to do is extend it courtesy, all the way to 7:30, whatever's in that drop box that morning will not be included in that cut-off.
But they would put on the list to be cut off and they didn't.
Just had them in before.
They're still going to be, they'll still be on there.
Yes, that's what I thought, yeah.
A cut-off is a work order, if I'm not mistaken, right?
It's an actual list of all the living room house that have their lines disconnected.
All right, more questions? Do we have a motion that we change the word, like, what was the?
I'm going to second also.
Okay, Michelle?
The next item on your business is the proposed 2,018 milliliter rate.
Uh, the milliliter rate this year will drop down to, from 4.917 to 4.355. Of course, the value has increased about $10,000, 10, 10. And, um, we will tend to adopt this next month, coming week, so you guys can think about it, if you guys want to change this, we'll need it like this.
Okay. More questions?
Does that mean much for the citizens?
No, you, you can, we'll let you.
Does it mean much for the citizens?
It depends on the.
It depends on the value of the home, because your value of the home could go up, but the milliliter price comes down, it could be, could equal out, or.
I mean, that's a given.
No.
Yeah, because they're. Zilla says my house is going up and up and up, you know, that's Zilla, I'm, I'm just saying, if everything was a steady, that would mean less.
For you, if your property value did not change according to the, of accessories at Barret County, the mileage rate, because it's lower, your property taxes would probably decrease. However, vice versa, if your property increased in value, even though it's a lower mileage rate, due to the rollback, you will still have higher property taxes.
More questions? All right, appreciate it.
Um, the next item is the first reading amendment to open records officer.
We talked about this on Thursday night, a year and a half ago, we created the office of open records officer in the city. What this ordinance does is maintain ones for non-teacher recorders and then create another open records officer for police records. You need a vote, or there needs to be a vote to waive the first reading.
I make that motion?
You have a second? I have a second, all in favor?
Okay, the next item on your business is the first reading for the reselling of 342 Price Street from R1 to R2. At our work session, I had discussed what feedback I had received from Bureau of Records, which, um, had indicated that the property should be redone to ORI commercial order and as R1. However, since then, there has been a conversation between the investor, Mr. Alwes, Hal Chipwood from Bureau of Records, and myself. And due to the blight in that area, Mr. Chipwood is uncomfortable with reselling it to an R2, the manual counsel are in support of that. However, the, Mr. Alwes would be responsible for staying in code compliance with it being a refresh, meaning, blah, 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 as well as any other code issues, they will have to be active compliance.
Question is, my understanding during the work session that the property developer had an issue with the firewall. They weren't just gonna be able to throw up some walls, they could go up in, up into the attic of the wall, I mean, it was a little bit...
Well, that's to separate the, the, if he's going to have duplexes, which R two means multi-handling, he'll have to put a firewall separating the two walls.
Is anybody here representing yet tonight?
He's not able, he was not able to make it through tonight. But he said he would, he would absolutely say some parts of what needed to be done.
Well, I mean, I might as well we do the first reading, or to, uh, to continue this process.
Oh, yeah. First reading? You have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, you have a motion, you second, I'll invite.
Okay, the next item on your business is that this accessible discussion, the argument is accessible.
I think the discussion was that, uh, we wanted to change the, the nature of it so that, uh, it would have the vendors, they would have the sandpods and those types of things. Is that the way you all remember it?
Uh, honestly, I was, uh, kinda left vague with exactly what we're getting all pointed out back.
Could, could y'all provide the same, like, re, refresh?
Um, there were a few things that came up, I know that there was a mention of, I gotta, like, doing some thumbnails and just keeping it, you know, very simple as opposed to the vendors coming in, because it's a very busy time of the year, as well as depending on weather, on how successful it is. Um, but we are receiving calls at City Hall wanting to know if we are gonna have a Christmas festival, and so how do they sign up? So, it is something that we'd like to go ahead and, for the mayor council to have on your radar, how you wanna go forward with the Christmas festival, whether we want to simplify it, like part of the city has it, or keep it as a custom as possible.
But you want to make a vote on that?
Well, council, we take out plans, we have a question. The last...
Would you like to be taken?
Well, I think it would be a good thing if we had a, that we stepped in for me, because I have spoken with some of the businesses, and they're going to discuss it in the business meeting, which you stepped in with yourself. And they asked that I come, and we're going to get, get inside there, probably.
Do you, would you like to make a question to take?
I was, uh, saying what they want to go by. And I just wanted to further to say, step there with something, which would be first Friday of, of that month, at eight o'clock.
Right.
I, I just wanted to verify that, so if anybody wanted to come, uh, the business meeting that she's speaking of is, uh, always the first Friday morning of, uh, the month, and it's eight o'clock. So, if anybody would, were to participate in, to listen to this or no luck, I, it furthers goes down the road, that would be the day.
And right now, the sun's always so close, 'cause I'm trying to fool all that here, so I don't have time to do Christmas, of course, after the festival. So, I'll make a motion that I voted until session.
Okay, do we have a motion? Okay, we have a motion, second. Second.
I hate it.
I'll invite. Anybody wanna volunteer? We need volunteers. Do you want your...
Volunteer, what are the volunteers for?
For table, for tables, uh, Christmas, right?
When I, when I was talking, we're doing it yet.
Right, but that's what I'm saying.
We just, we just tabled the, the decision on it till next month.
Do we have a date? Are you talking about in November, December?
I doubt it, no, it's all gonna be discussed at, at, probably at the business meeting, my understanding.
I just thought if it's talked about a week or more before Thanksgiving, like, business meeting, last meeting, we have.
Well, you're telling me more than I know, nothing more than I already dealt, so...
You're welcome.
So, I mean, if you've got some, a little bit more marketing light and sort of...
It's all I can really say, they discussing, you gotta understand that there are business people, they're targeting their market, their opportunity to sell the product. So, their, their interest is business oriented, tied on what they can make for the Christmas season. And that gives them a head start on it, which is what most other businesses around Barrow County do. And that's why, one of the reasons, I believe that they were discussing that earlier in the day. Um, doesn't fall well with some old timer like me that thinks Christmas ought to be closer, at least in December, but that's your honor. I don't sell anything.
Okay, fine.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're moving to Citizens Concerned, Ms. Catherine Corcoran, Budget Ethics Police Department.
My name is Kate Corcoran, two nine nine six, Waterford, Atlanta, Georgia, three zero three five four. I am first very quickly gonna address Dwight's testimony last week. Every single statement is what I'm gonna talk about. Every single statement that he made at that meeting was a lie, and I do approve that, Dwight. I do see new people, and I'm proud to tell everyone about that, it's not a secret. I'm also gay, I'm a Baptist and a Republican. None of that is your business, none of my business is your business.
Okay, we're not...
This is about ethics, and I'm talking about...
We're not knowing the, the fact, we get warned, we make a...
Oh, so they can attack me, I can't respond, is that correct? Oh, okay, well, there you go. I've never attacked any of your private lives, I talk about what you view as government officials. Last week, Mr. Corcoran also said Thomas Mitchell has charged the city over twenty thousand dollars to defend against my open records lawsuits. That sounds probably about right, it may be more. The fact is that he could have settled this dispute with a refund of seventy dollars in December of two thousand sixteen. The city overcharged me, and I demanded a refund, it was that simple. His refusal to fix this situation resulted in me looking into numerous other open records violations and filing a lawsuit. I'm not a lawyer, and I may not win this lawsuit because of that. The lawsuit is in Superior Court, and there are many procedures that I don't know about. But I can tell you this for sure, Statham loses no matter what, because of that man right there, and the money he has already charged you. Thomas Mitchell runs this town. You're wearing a shirt that's embroidered with the word mayor, you're wearing the shirt, everyone knows that he wears them pants. He consistently gives bad advice to this city, and often that bad advice ends up with a lawsuit against the city. As a result of his bad advice, the mayor changed his mind and did not fire Mark Lawton or suspend him. That decision has brought about numerous lawsuits in more time. Mitchell's original advice on the transfer station resulted in a costly lawsuit and battle for the city. There were more, there was more moral advice that led to the arrest of Tony McDaniel and Son, or more, a few months ago. Five days ago, Mr. Mitchell proposed a new open records ordinance that requires requests to be in writing. That is flatly against the law. Your lawyer gives you advice that is against the law. The Open Records Act says plainly, quote, "A request made pursuant to this article may be made to the custodian of a public record orally or in writing. I know for a fact that Mitchell has told you all and the city auditors to send everything possible by text message rather than by email, and then delete that text, to avoid the Open Records Act, that is illegal." He advised you to keep your mouth shut and not say a word in November of two thousand sixteen about Mark Lawton, that according to you is steady. That advice has changed this city forever. Ultimately, the actions that he meant for evil are going to work for the good of this community, because God doesn't waste anything. Mitchell advises you to call special meetings in the middle of the day, rather than having you discuss everything openly in regular meetings, such as this one. That is not the way it's supposed to work. Special call meetings are only meant for topics that come up between regular meetings that need to be resolved right away. The eth, the Ethics Committee discussion needs to be in a regular meeting, because of, because that is what is ethical and legal. Mitchell wrote in ordinance that requires citizens to get on the agenda to speak before they even have any idea of what will be voted on. That is legally unconscionable. The American government is of the people, by the people, it is meant to be open. This is the first paragraph of the Georgia Open Records Act, and I'm going to give you a copy of that guidebook, which my Changie already has. It does not need Mr. Mitchell's advice every time she gets an open records request. It's written very simply. "The agenda is meant to be posted far in advance of the meeting, and the citizens, citizens are meant to be free to comment, not regulated by county law regulations that hamper their speaking." And this is that first paragraph of the Open Records Act. It says, quote, "The General Assembly finds and declares that the strong public policy of this state is in favor of open government, that open government is essential to a free, open, and democratic society, and that public access to public records should be encouraged across the confidence of government." That's not five minutes, because I timed this and y'all have thirty seconds, thirty. So, yeah, so that was four and a half minutes.
Okay.
May I respond?
Of course he may respond, I may not respond to him, but he may respond to me.
If you have thirty seconds left of talking to do, just talk.
Oh, no, apparently I don't like...
That's not thirty up.
Okay, well, um, you know, I, I knew last Thursday that whatever I had to say about something wrong in Statham wasn't going to go off. As a matter of fact, I anticipated it coming off as an attack. When in actuality, all I did, Ms. Corcoran, was state some facts about your public life in the court system that you found unacceptable. Now, I didn't dig into her personal life, all I did was did open records requests from five different counties, and what I found was pretty, like, eye-opening for, for anybody. So, it wasn't, I understand that Ms. Corcoran showed me that she had won a lot of her cases. And I get that you've won a lot of your cases. But, it's, it's my belief that your attitude and your lawsuits don't warrant thirty thousand dollars' worth of damage to the citizens of Statham. And truth be told, you had, already had tons and tons of hyper-litigious legis, uh, litigation already in play before you even came to Statham and those other counties. It's almost as if Ms. Corcoran came here looking for trouble. And Barrow County is, was ripe for her, because she had no, she didn't have any action here in Barrow County. Now, I'm going to describe in great detail what a hyper-litigious person is for the audience, because... Because we need to know, and I identified Ms. Corcoran in your lawsuit and your, your life, your public life, as a problem to Statham. So, I will read what a hyper-litigious person is, and it says, and this is from the Journal of Psychiatry Law.
You're the same, that you go through the same, um, school of medicine that Mark Lawton did, 'cause he liked to die, those people...
No, I just wanna read what it says about a particular type of person.
Now, you're often, buddy.
And it says, "A hyper-litigious person has been described across professions in different ways. Legally, it is referred to as vexatious litigation, whereas medically, it's been diagnosed as prayerless paranoia. The nicknames that society gives these types of people are cranks, injustice collectors, serial pests, and wrecks of injust, of injustice. In general, these terms describe an individual who exhibits several of these following qualities. And you'll make a note, that in my opinion, Ms. Corcoran got a hundred. And the first quality is that she initiates dozens or hundreds of suits. Okay? She has a life that revolves around the development and progress of litigation. Check. Is not deterred by repeated negative outcomes. Files suit that are trivial and unfounded. Invests great amounts of time in litigation. And is known as a persistent presence for lawyers, judges, and clerks, particularly our city clerk, Mike. Ms. Corcoran reminds me of a schoolyard bully, running around, uh, terrorizing anybody and everyone she can manipulate to do what she wants to do. I'm not calling her, that is my opinion, I'm not calling her a terrorist, I'm not attacking her. All I'm doing is stating some facts about something that I see, which I was elected to do. They elected me to find and identify problems and solutions, and that's what I did. It's unfortunate that it fell in Camp of Corcoran as one of our own, as someone who helped me get elected. I hated it, I hated the decision that I had to make against somebody that helped me. But the, the decision had to be made, and the line in the sand had to be drawn. And that's precisely what I did. I do not condone her behavior, I don't like the way she presents herself, I don't like the way she acts towards others. There's a lot of things that I completely and vehemently oppose about Ms. Corcoran, her lifestyle, and her beliefs. That is not an attack, those are statements of my opinion and certain facts about her life. So, if you wanna call it an attack, call it what you want, but that is, those are facts. That's not you making things up, that's Ms. Corcoran's public life as I see it. And if you want more information, please see me after the meeting.
I would like to respond to what you said about she came here looking for trouble, she did not come here looking for trouble. My sister got in trouble with a police officer that is gone now, that has caused multiple suits on this place because of how he handled himself, and how y'all handled, not you, because you weren't here, and not, that one, I keep remembering, I get. But those there, and Steve, and the other guy. Because she came to y'all, wait a minute now, let me respond, and I'm not getting ugly. She came to y'all, and she showed y'all the video, she talked to y'all, she asked y'all to do something about Lawton and get this off of her record. And, wait a minute now, I hit the same up where you called. Y'all chose not to do it. Can y'all just let somebody talk that wants to talk for points instead of causing a great big jerk? You're the one that said she came here looking for it, she did not. My sister was arrested, you're gonna have to hold this, she was arrested, drunk, like, she was treated like a dog out there in that parking lot by the EMS up here, and y'all sit back and try to make it out like my sister, and... My sister didn't have her, no, let me talk, let me talk. She took two years before she filed a lawsuit, trying to get y'all to do something, and all of it did nothing for her.
We've heard this.
Yes, you have, you have.
Thousand times, we've heard it here.
And y'all have still tried to trash her, trash that girl. What she has come up with come from your own records. The girl has everything in y'all's records. She's not gonna...
You think you're gonna, you think you're...
Hold on, hold on, I'm here. Y'all, I'm saying, it's showing who you are, you can't handle it. This is why you have lawsuits on your city.
That's okay, we don't like it, if you're feeling that, what happened?
I will gladly let y'all skirt. And that's a nice conversation for all of you, especially people of red shirt. Yeah. See, you're little, you're professional...
See your little, your professionalism? Yeah, all of y'all's. This is why y'all have lawsuits on your city. Correct.
More comments?
I just don't, basically, I don't understand how people can come from other places and just, I mean, they're not just bashing the town in this room, they bash this town everywhere it is public. And, you know, there's, there's a.
You got to, you got to understand what they do, my friend.
I understand that. Most of the same work they do.
It's, a lot of people fail, well, I didn't see. You got to understand what, what she does. And I knew it all along, the fact that we tried to get over it.
I just don't like.
We don't move on. It's something that earns you what you get, okay?
Next item for citizens concerned is Kathy Crawley, Ethics Committee, open records request and street safety.
I don't forget to follow that, but we're going to put it, we're going to use it. I wasn't going to speak about ethics because I spoke about laws, but I will say this much and I believe it firmly. I have been in this town, I won't vote. When I came crawling through two, two, two breaks in drive, I'm sorry.
Make sure you put it on the, on the table.
There comes a time where you got to let go. You know, the first thing I heard when I got to this town was about my fault. And I thought I've heard since I've lived here. Now, I'm not saying that people can get hurt, I did not, I'm not saying that. People have got hurt. Um, I don't like the fact that somebody took their life. I mean, I, I feel for that. But this is where the Ethics Committee part comes in. You do have to make, you got to draw the line in saying somewhere you're talking about. So between citizens and then you got your Ethics Committee, then you've got, you know, council. So, um, basically, I just want to say sometimes I think somewhere you got to let go and move forward.
I agree.
Um, and I don't know how I don't hear about open's request because I don't like that.
Yeah, it's like you're going to Arkansas.
Don't have nothing to open. Uh, street safety, I have actually with the chief about this. Around our neighborhoods, we are having a terrible time with kids and I'm not talking about fifteen, sixteen, I'm talking about nine, ten, on four-wheelers, dirt bikes, not me, that, even in my subdivision. And the guy that live there, I, I can only tell you, I see them around the corner of Giants and Hammy and I, no helmets on them. You know, I saw two kids get hit by a car, uh, because they ran out front of the park. My need was to say is that there are raising families, crossroads, uh, up and down Broad Street, Providence, and then around my neighborhood. And I would just like to, you know, give a little information around the state, we can't get that stopped enough.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Tom.
We do have a need for executive session for that. I want to let the council know about something that happened last Friday. You all may recall, those that were here may recall, the citizens stood up and accused the city of engaging in criminal activity with regard to the Open Records Act. On Friday, the Georgia Attorney General's Office, who is chief law enforcement officer of State of Georgia, who is charged with, has taken upon the office enforcing open meetings and open records, wrote a letter to the citizen, copied me on it, and for purposes of the, the audience, I just want to read the, the first paragraph. It says, "I am writing in response," this is from Assistant Attorney General, who is responsible for open meetings and open records. I'm writing, addressing this to the, Ms. Corcoran. "I'm writing in response to your recent emails about the way the city of Stateum is responding to your open records request. One of the issues that has arisen is the city's policy of no longer emailing records, you've instead asking you to pick the records up in person. The city is correct that the Open Records Act does not explicitly require an agency to mail or email records only to produce them for inspection. Furthermore, an agency may impose a reasonable charge for the search, retrieval, redaction, and reduction of copying costs of those records. Once those costs have been incurred and records have been produced for inspection, the act is not prohibiting an agency from applying to mail the records until those costs have been paid. Similarly, I don't think the city asking you to pay for the production, retrieval, and redaction for you have a chance to look at the records is a clear violation of the law. According to Attorney General's Office, the Assistant Attorney General responsible for enforcing City of Stateum in the actions since the middle of July, was prompted this, these complaints have been in compliance with the open record law."
Any questions?
Was this about, um, her being assaulted by an assistant city clerk?
She, apparently she was up here one day when Maya Michelle, the mayor, herself, read SDS meeting and refused to leave after business hours when the assistant clerk asked her to leave. Video evidence has been reviewed and the clerk did not do anything wrong.